Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm calling the meeting. Excuse me to order and before we begin, I will turn it over. For the state which time manager. To give you those the protocol.
Yep, uh as you. Just heard the meetings being recorded, so um we'll make sure to post it on the town website as well. Uh for folks to consume after they're. Uh not able to join us today or if they want to rewatch it. For folks that are joining us online uh during public comments. Um if you want to use the raise hand function or um also feel free to send me a message in the chat. I'm I'd be happy to um let the mayor know that you wish to make a comment. I see we do have one hand raised already, so very good. Uh for those here um as well, feel free to comment uh during public comment times. Um for anybody who does wish to make a comment, just ask that you state your name and uh your street for the record. Um for folks that are joining online, I am going to uh stop your video. Um just so that it's easier for the recording for us to kind of watch what's happening. Let's see.
Wait, wait a minute, where is that? Is that the podium?
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you. Yeah. Um and. Yeah, you feel free to turn your video on when you when you're making a comment, but if I uh do turn off your video, don't uh please don't be offended. Uh it's not because we don't want to see your face. It just makes it easier to follow along with the the video recording. Um and uh last but not least, if we do get interrupted and we're not able to continue on. We will uh stop the meeting. And I'll send out a new link for us to join uh townwide, so we can carry on with our business um and continue on as planned. With that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn.
Okay, thank you. So we'll begin with our public comment period.
Uh and I do see.
Thank you, sir. You got you got something on.
Well, thanks.
Remember to tell us your name, major street.
Yes, Rohit Kanna, Fallstone. I'm using the podium, but this one I can't. So I wanted to raise uh two two issues that that I brought to the council before already, but which I I just. Uh feel the need to do again, because I don't know what what action has been taken or hasn't been taken. Uh the first is the question of sidewalks. Um as many of you know, walk the town, there are sidewalks that are now halfway obstructed by vegetation. Uh and there are sidewalks, even someone as short as I am, has to bend over to get to get under the trees. So I know it's now been a few months. I know that uh the natural resource committee had made a recommendation as well, so I really would appreciate. If the council would would advise us when we had expect.
Okay, well, so that's a question, let's say the town manager respond because.
Shall I get to go or would you do the first one, sir? In case you have a problem.
Sure. So uh yeah, thank you. And uh we actually did. I just signed a contract with the company to do um a townwide uh trimming as well. So first step, we'll take care of the trimming townwide on town trees, things like that. Then the next we'll start reaching out individually to households that have things that are encroaching into the sidewalk. We sent out a few townwide messages, but I think we've uh gone back and forth on email about this, obviously. People might not realize that they're they might be kind of oblivious to how their own uh plantings are encroaching in. So I think some targeted um messages is kind of the next step for um that as well.
Okay, we expect it in the next few weeks.
Yes, 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 yeah, yes, yeah, this this month we'll we'll certainly get it taken care of. Yes, absolutely.
But but also, but also, so you know, this has been an ongoing problem for decades, right? And it would be very helpful if you point out which which locations. And we also want to keep publicizing so that residents will tell us where the obstruction is on.
Yeah, and I identify individual town trees. We have a list of all twenty eight of them or whatever it is.
Well, yes, yeah, and thank you. Yes, that was very helpful.
Not only the tree, you know, for example, it's not only the trees, it's it's people's.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And and you know, one of the issues about it is that um. There's a lot of expensive um plantings and people don't want to cut them. And so unfortunately, that's what the law is. And and you know, citizens have the right to use sidewalks, what we have. So so um in the past, you know, we've had some issues when people are trying to enforce something. They don't like it, so.
So you know, I think it's it's the town's right of way and it's it's in your code.
I know.
Quite frankly, it's a best friend safety issue, so with all due respect to the my relatives, my fellow neighbors, time's up.
I'm I'm not.
Enough of the name.
I'm not trying to make excuses, but in the past, when we've been. Heavy handed, we we get criticized, so just so you know, but but thank you for bringing it up. And I do think that we should have the uh, but you always put that in your column. Yeah, but then that can also step up the the communications of that. Because people don't always read.
Yeah, I think that that's.
And and more than likely, a lot of the offenders don't even read the tenor and all, nor do they read the uh this week. Okay, so thank you. I'm glad you came.
The second, the second thing I wanted to talk about is the towns uh what you need contracted police officer. Um and uh so let me say at the outset that I am all for having contracted police officer in the staff. I think I think it's uh something we should do. And I'm I believe that a visible presence of police officer includes public safety. But I have to say that having our contracted town police officer sit. At the intersection of Surrey and Essex, Surrey and Fallstone, Surrey and Greystone, I don't understand the purpose of it. Uh and quite frankly, it's a complete waste of taxpayers' money, the way I see it. So unless someone can give me a good reason, I've spoken to the chair of the Public Safety Committee, he can't understand the reason. The chair, the traffic safety committee doesn't see the reason, so at this point. Uh at least two committee men, two committee chairs don't see the reason for having a police officer at these locations. I think more than a year and a half ago, there was supposed to be policing guidelines. That hasn't, that's why Rhino hasn't been done. Um but for me, the main thing right now is that I don't think it is fiscally prudent to continue spending taxpayers' money. To pay for something in which I don't see what the town is getting for it. So I'm basically asking that the town suspend. This uh arrangement, whatever is contractually permissible. Uh until guidelines are in place, until the traffic safety or the public safety committee have have. Have given what whatever advice is needed, uh but you know, throwing money uh at this just simply because. I don't know why, uh to me, I think it's just it's just not good for national management of our town. Uh and so I really would leave with you that at the earliest possible time. We suspend this. Again, I say suspend, because I do believe we should have a contracted police officer, but with clear guidelines. On where it makes sense for this police officer to focus his time. Uh and uh and precisely with what terms of reference. I've sent you my suggestions, uh but I'm sure there are other thoughts on it, but I think whatever it is, the current arrangement, my opinion, doesn't make much sense.
Wait, can I ask a question now?
Yeah, hold on, hold on a second. So so uh first of all, when you talk to, no, let the liaison. So when you talk to the chair, uh I believe that they are make these these uh guidelines for the police officers. They're they're supposed to be forwarding. The guidelines for the council to consider, so he, you know, he said something like that, because I don't know where that stands.
I, to be honest, I found it the other way around, that they're waiting for a drop from town managers.
Well, sure.
It's it's gone, it's gone like back and forth a lot, you know, I I I don't exactly know.
It has a come to a work session?
I mean, yeah, like a year ago, we were talking about it and.
So so one thing really is that um months ago during the budget, we had assigned Matt. And he has a million things on his plate, obviously, but we assigned Matt to look at the different alternatives for. Whether we're gonna have uh hiring Montgomery County Police Officers, whether we hire Chevy Chase Village Officers. Or whether we have a private security service service. So all these issues, I think we all we all agree with you that there needs to be some guidance, because there. So as I've said many times, you know, when the police were hired twenty years ago, it's just like we hired them and there was there was nothing, you know. And then different town managers didn't even know how to supervise, including, you know, Matt. And that's why we want to come up with, you know, we uh many people have the same view that you do. Some council members do probably too. So so thanks for coming tonight to sort of jumpstart us and. And and maybe you want to respond to it.
No, I was, you know, it's interesting, because um. I agree, and I uh like, you know, I'm not exactly sure, like, I I I would prefer to have police presence in town. At some point, but standing there and kind of, you know, sitting at these corners, I'm not sure. But then at the same time, it is also like you see them and people see them and, you know, it's it's a police presence. And so that's kind of where, like, I get confused, like, you know, if you, do you think that um. You would, you know, the just the fact, the sheer fact that they're there and that people do see them around town, do you think that that is a benefit?
I mean, my my own take is 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 first just from reading literature on the subject, this visible presence makes a difference. Uh I think that no, I don't think I think anybody would argue that simply having police presence in a community has some effect.
Mm hmm.
Um but I think always being on Surrey, not this this obsession with Surrey is a bit inexplicable. But it's always Surrey and Essex, Surrey and Fallstone, Surrey and Greystone. I don't know what this Surrey thing is.
Well, but you know, they're also like ideal and um Cumberland, and they're also sometimes with the tennis courts. And so those are like the ones that you see.
Yeah.
And but they're also in other areas of town.
So I think, to me, I think they they, you know, my view is that if they're if they're at uh, you know. They could, you know, there's a whole discussion about enforcement of traffic. I don't really, I don't have a strong view on enforcement. I think that police presence has a traffic calming there. Even if it's not a traffic enforcement.
Mm hmm.
And if you want to have traffic calming, there's no other place in the town that needs it more than Dorset.
Mm hmm.
Uh and so, uh you know, one thing I would request is ask the police officer to spend more time at Dorset and Warwick, Dorset and. Uh Surrey, uh because those are the two busiest intersections in the town. And so I don't really, you know, people say, well, they don't they don't stop, they don't enforce stop sign violations. Well, that's okay, as long as they can, as long as it's the most egregious violations that they do have an effect on, and it do slow the traffic.
Well, they're supposed, they're supposed to.
There's a.
The the issue.
And the other thing, sorry, just to finish it, like, for me, you know, it's fine to be at at a deal or or a town pool. Um but I think, you know, during school hours, during school sessions, they should be in the in the vicinity of the school. Um we're a neighborhood of sports, and we can afford to have this the extra redundant police presence. And I think we should deploy that really in the most vulnerable spots. As we unfortunately in our country, most vulnerable spot right now, which is schools.
Yeah.
Uh and and so I know Montgomery County in the with the the school system and and CPS as well, I'm sure they've got their own things.
Yeah.
But that's what every community in America has said the same day. They all thought they would be the last ones.
Yeah.
So I think that, you know, I all I ask is during school hours, forget deal, forget the town pool, forget Surrey. Be somewhere at Warwick nearby the school, just gain a physical presence.
But we've had, you know, some years ago, the uh traffic, the uh. What do you call it?
The traffic, the um the the guard.
Your guard, you know, she was harassed by people, by our residents and by uh parents, kids. And so we had the police officer there from time to time. But the one thing I want to ask you, wouldn't you want to be on one of the committees?
Sure.
The public safety.
The topic committee, you know, the life form, not a committee discussion.
You're scandal public safety.
What do you want to be? I think you, I honestly, I think.
Communications.
I think you should be on the on the.
Totally.
Do you?
I'm 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 happy to join.
Okay, excellent. So then you'll be, okay, so before we, before we go, um I think.
Yeah, I'll just note that the traffic committee did send an email to the mayor and council and manager this afternoon. The effect of which is saying that um the original. Rationale for police was to monitor traffic in the town. Traffic committee believes they are not doing that and no longer sees their role in relation to that as um. Fulfilled by the police, so they are saying from their perspective, the police are not doing their job.
Okay, so it's the last word that's.
I can try that one.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's like you.
I just want to say for the record, I don't think it's okay that the police do not stop, do not do any traffic enforcement. I don't know, it it's outrageous to me that you can speed down Dorset and the policeman could be sitting there possibly and not stop somebody. It doesn't make any sense to me. And if they're not going to do it, why can't we get Montgomery County to come in with their speed guns every now and then and put them on Dorset Avenue?
That's a hard.
Okay, just sort of bring it up. I mean, I think that it just brings up a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of questions. And so I agree, I mean, I think we should definitely put this on the work session agenda for, I guess, this next Monday, I think. Um but uh yeah, so, so.
You got Labor Day, oh, come on.
I know, but we'll see each other a lot lately.
Okay, that's that's. Are you?
I'm done.
Okay, let's have Matt have the last word and then I think by the end, and we'll make sure you get a point into the. Because I think they have.
Show up, show up.
Welcome to the committee.
Yeah.
No, and uh thanks for the comments. Um I I think the the police, in my experience, have always been amenable to recommendations. If we have specific places that we want them to be, if we want them to carry out certain actions, I think they're, you know, they're 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 public servants. They are Montgomery County Police Officers, um so we're we're fortunate that we have them able to spend the time in town. Um I think as council member Robek said, I think it's worth a a bigger discussion about kind of what. What do we want the purpose of this program to be?
No, I like very much the fact that we were at the intersection of Fallstone and Warwick and the uh sidewalks program.
Sure.
That's the kind of proactive, and I think that's what, sure, there will be response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh Lucy Freeman has her hand up as well. Lucy, uh feel free to turn on your video if you so desire.
Oh, okay. Well, since I can't start on my, turn on my video, because my host hasn't let me. But I'm Lucy Freeman, and I live at four seven one nine Fallstone Avenue. I sent an email to all of you, but I sent it so late, you know, just after six thirty, so I know nobody has seen it. But I'm concerned about access to the trail behind the pool. I I don't know if you all are aware, but there are two paths that one can take. To get to the trail behind the pool. One path is along the pool, right between the pool and the creek. And uh in the Friday's announcement, it said that that path was going to be closed. I hadn't been aware it was going to close, and I don't know if it had been in an earlier communication, and I had just missed it. But many of us take that path to walk on the trail. Now, I see, I go there every day, once or twice a day, and many people from Somerset walk there. And also people from Friendship Heights, Monday through Friday, I see a guy who goes there over lunch, works at Geico and walks there. Over his lunchtime, and then Chevy Chase Village, Chevy Chase West, just a lot of people are are walking along there. You know, it's a very nice woodsy trail when we're here in this congested area. Uh so as as you all know, I think you all know, that is now closed as of today. So there's another way to get back there, and that's to walk along the the parking lot, then along the path, and you come to the creek. Well, I didn't know if I could walk across the creek skipping over the stones, but when I got there, there is now a log, a tree that has fallen. So to get across there, you'd have to jump over, climb over the tree, and then go across the stones. So I was wondering, first of all, my first question is, how long will the path next to the pool be closed?
Unfortunately, it's going to be closed throughout the duration of the construction at the pool, because that's the only place that they can access the pool.
And it will be closed twenty four seven.
Yes.
I'm I'm wondering if uh the uh isn't Councilwoman Heller and Councilwoman Moore, weren't you on the uh?
Yes.
Yeah, so it, would it be possible for the contractor to to create some kind of path?
I don't think so. I don't think so, because the the idea is that they have to take down the fence, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, they have to bring in this heavy equipment. And they have to, they have to take, you know, the um the concrete out. It's a big, big job. And yeah, we are going to be, you know, put out for a while, but I think it's really important. And I think we have to work with the pool company, that they have to clean up every day, so they can open the path. That's going to just delay this process. I think we just have.
Well, I have alternatives. Should I give my alternatives?
Yes, please do.
Okay, you know, I feel this is a very important issue. I don't know. Had there been notice that this path was going to be closed before, I hadn't seen it, but many people use this. So first of all, could one build over the creek? You know, I'm talking about the path that goes, you know, you walk to the parking lot, then you walk along the path, then you come to the creek. So is there a way to build a small bridge over the creek?
That's what I was saying.
That's that's a protected area, though, so it would, it would, that would require a whole other set of permitting process that would take a lot of time. Um and uh.
Not any of him, you, by the way.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And and Lucy, first of all, you're you're absolutely right. That's a beautiful area back there, widely used. Um and it would be great to kind of restore access to it. And uh as the as Debbie and Matt noted, you know, this was just this past week. We looked at various options that would be the staging area for the construction. And turned out that the best way, given, as you know, the entrance to the pool, that that side open area where the bike racks are, is. Most, you know, ideal staging, but the consequence of that was, you know, for safety reasons. We couldn't allow people to walk around that staging area and into the woods, and so that got closed. This Thursday, uh Debbie and I and Matt are meeting again with with the construction company. And this is a topic on the agenda, this, you know, we are in sort of a transition period from closing to construction going in full swing. And so these issues will come up, and we will look to, we look to find a way to resolve it. I think it's challenging, but we will look to find a way to resolve it. So you, I appreciate you raising it. And apologies from all of us that it was sort of unexpected um disruption and, you know. What is, I think, an important dog walking moment for everyone.
Okay, so so Lucy, Lucy, so they'll get back to you.
No, I have other play, I have other suggestions.
We saw your note, and we would love to maybe talk to you in detail about it. And and kind of brainstorm scenario, but oh, feel free to run through them if you feel now, but.
Okay, right now, I want to mention the other ones. If you could put at each end a post with a post in the middle. And run a rope through, so maybe as people are walking along, you know, like when you go hiking in mountains and it's a more treacherous area. You can hold on to a rope when you're going along, so if you could do that, or if you could have improved stepping stones. Going across, but right now, immediately, somebody has to do something about that tree. So so you don't have to jump over or climb over a tree to be able to start walking on the stepping stones.
Yeah, I pre I pre, I think those are great creative ideas. Some of them are more obviously prac- uh practical than others, as you can uh uh understand. So we we will, I think we need to kind of, we've all, Debbie and I and Matt, we're going to walk through all the area. We need to physically be there and kind of look at it from the lens of the construction and everything. And so that's planned for this Thursday, and we will definitely get back to you. I see Barbara Condos as I am raised. I was thinking suspicious, it's for the suspicion that it's for the same issue. We're looking forward to hearing from her as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Lucy.
Yeah, Barbara, if you want to go ahead. You are, you're muted right now, just FYI.
Go ahead, Barbara.
I I've, oh, here, I can do my video too, if you want. There we go.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I think that's, anyway, Barbara Condos, forty seven oh six Fallstone Avenue. Um my question is. Where they're putting um, I think today they were putting woodchips down where the access path is going to go. Which is actually on the the top of the bank of the creek. Has that, did that, I met a few minutes ago, mentioned the far end, the the other end of the creek off the upper parking lot. Um would, or maybe Jeffrey did, uh would be uh environmentally impacted. Did the location of the access point, is that, does that environment, was the, was there any environmental? Impact from use using that, and if so, did they run it past whoever you have to run it past?
Yeah, American Pool went through the permitting process that included the site plan, staging and and all of that. So so they're responsible for for that.
Short answer, Barbara, is no to your question. It's not, uh but but I think you you, both of you are, you know, raising an important issue. We need to make sure there's access to that path, and we'll look at that. I think it is challenged, but we look at it on uh when we all get together, so I appreciate your patience there.
So this is why, thank you, Councilwoman Condos. So this is what, this is why it was so important to have council liaisons in this project.
So can I say one more thing about this? You know, because Barbara and Lucy, I know you especially appreciate this. Is that one of the things we're looking at is getting this pool open on time next summer. And so we are going to do everything we can to move this process along speedily. So we open on opening day and not later, and we don't want to impede the pool company. Now, that doesn't mean we shouldn't look at all these options when we meet with them and see what's possible, just to let you know. But you need to know the goal is to open this pool on time. So, there we go.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and and Matt will continue. Uh I think it would be good if Matt uh continues to publicize all these. Issues um with the construction. Is it, was anybody else? No, okay, thank you. Yep. And so we will now move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion?
I agree.
Now, who's, is there a second? Or is there a discussion? Hearing now, all this and.
Hi.
Thank you, thank you. Uh the next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion? The move.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mar and Circo. Is there a statement? Hearing now, all this in favor?
Hi.
Oh, it's nice, thank you. And now we will move to our first uh public hearing. This is to consider approval of a building permit application submitted by Marco and Robin Rand for the construction of the driveway. When the property located forty seven two Fallstone Avenue. The applicant is requesting a wide driveway as a reasonable accommodation. So we begin, this is a hearing before the town Somerset Council for permit application number two three nine D R one R A. To consider approval of a curb cut application submitted by Marco and Robin Rand. For the expansion of the driveway and driveway apron for the property located at forty seven two Fallstone Avenue. The applicant is requesting the application as a reasonable accommodation. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record. A report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant and the representatives will rep- will present the their application or comment on the staff findings. Next, the town council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application. And the council should introduce all findings of fact during their comments or questions. Next, other interested parties, including town residents, will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff only. Or make comments to the council applicant or staff. Next, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony. After which, the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. No new information shall be considered or submitted for the record after this point. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. So then you added all this nice stuff. Okay, so I think the instructions for the hand raising have already. So you added all this nice stuff. Okay, so I think the instructions for the hand raising have already given. So we will now begin the hearing with the staff findings and reports, Mr. Town Manager.
Sure, so um yeah, I'll try to be brief. Uh so the app hints Marco and Robin Rand and I do see um Robin Rand uh on online and I think Doug, uh their son, is also here today to um to help answer any questions. Um the app, uh so the the town code provides the council acts on permit applications for permanent driveway aprons or curb cuts in a new location or of a different size. The applicant is requesting a permit for the expansion of their existing driveway as a reasonable accommodation. Uh the existing driveway, uh you can see by the site plan drawing, is twenty one feet uh wide. And they are asking essentially to extend the width of the driveway to to the town property and then um add in the uh the uh radius or the the uh access uh sides. So a total of thirty thirty one point five feet to be five feet on on each side to allow it to turn into it. Um the uh it it's it requires a reasonable accommodation because the the town code does provide that curb cuts are not to exceed ten feet in width within seven feet of the street pavement, um except where connects with uh uh the street uh allows a five foot radius on each side. Um uh I I just said that in general, as a reminder, that that staff doesn't provide a recommendation if there are variances or reasonable accommodation requests like this. Um but if the council were to find that the applicant's shown good cause for a wider driveway as their reasonable accommodation, um I offered a a few conditions that you might consider. One is that um the applicant provide protection to the tree on the property um that's marked on the site plan in accordance with the town arborist. Uh the second is ensuring that the apron doesn't cross into the property or it uh over on the street in what would be on the applicant or on the neighbor's property if you drew a straight line from the, if that makes sense, even though it's the town right of way, but we don't want it to cross into the area that would otherwise be the neighbor's property. Um and uh the Doug has recommended that um he he's recommended using a tapered entrance instead of a radius, actually. It it that's Montgomery County's best practices. And it it better protects the town right of way when you're driving in, uh turning. Um and um that the increased apron size is conditioned upon uh on the length of the applicant's residence at forty seven oh two Fallstone. That's also an option um which the applicant uh offered. The last note I'll make is I I did add for you uh this afternoon uh the the neighboring property that's probably most impacted by this at forty seven hundred Fallstone um gave gave a letter saying um in essence that they didn't object to the widening of the driveway, but did want to make sure that a few um precautions were were taken place so that they're not adversely effective. The first is the encroachment issue that I that I mentioned. And then the second is that they did have some water uh issues because forty seven oh two is a little bit higher than forty seven hundred. Um so my recommendation there would be uh just before the work begins that uh we ensure that the uh any digging and any addition there is not impacting um the stormwater uh the uh stormwater mitigation efforts that that have been undertaken at forty seven hundred Fallstone. Um with that, uh.
Okay, so before um we turn it over to the um applicants, given the fact that I don't think this council has uh considered an application for reasonable accommodation. So I would like the town attorney to elaborate on what you discussed in terms of what what does this mean and and how is the code apply? What what are they actually deciding? Using what criteria?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Town Attorney.
Yes, be happy to, Mr. Mayor. So federal law provides that in order to provide a disabled resident with fair opportunity to use and enjoy their property, municipalities should entertain requests for reasonable accommodations from district application of building codes. So here, as the manager noted, the applicant has explained why a reasonable accommodation was requested and needed. And the town, under that federal law, can decide whether the request is reasonable. To do so, the town can consider whether the request would interfere with any general plan for the town. With respect to whether a request is reasonable, the town could also condition approval to the duration of the applicant's residence at the property, as noted by the manager. To effectuate that condition recommended by the building permit administrator and noted in the manager's written staff report, if the council does decide to go that route, I would suggest that it be effectuated with a recorded public access agreement, which would say, for example, that the the request is granted for the duration of the applicant's residence and should a subsequent owner in the future seek to replace that apron, it would need to be replaced in accordance with town standards in effect at the time. It's optional, but if you don't have that agreement recorded in land records, it may be difficult to enforce that provision fifty years from now.
You're fucking.
You can't hear?
No.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to answer any questions the council has. I and I apologize, I'll try to speak up.
So are the applicants uh wishing to speak now?
Yes, uh well, uh Mr. Rand, I don't know if you um.
Sure.
If you're gonna, if you can come over, thank you so much. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Um so I appreciate those of you who may have been able to read my parents' uh uh original initial letter, but just in case, it would be helpful. It's very very important to just read it out there. They're they're on soon. But um so this is a note from my father, he can't really speak. Um I'm the owner of uh forty seven oh two Fallstone Avenue, along with my wife, Robin. The plan to move in is to be possible to be close to our son Doug Rand, his wife's daughter, and our two grandchildren, who live at fifty five seventeen Uptown Street. This is a big move for us. So we have lived in the same home in Jacksonville, Florida for the past forty six years. It's also a logistically complicated move because I'm disabled and confined to a car or wheelchair. In order to go about my daily life in Somerset, I'll need to have the full width of the driveway at this property, slowly down the street. At present, there is a standard concrete driveway that slopes down the street, next to a brick driveway that's separated from the street by a curve. I understand that I need to satisfy the following uh following door criteria in order for the Town of Somerset to approve this disability accommodation request. Number one, the applicant must be disabled. Uh so I'm gonna go into my first person now, not my father's. Uh so my dad has uh amyotropic glottal sclerosis or ALS, the year he's he's a military veteran uh and a BA that has a minimum one hundred percent service connected to the table. Number two, the limitation uh must be substantial, considering its nature and severity, duration, or expected duration, and permanent long-term impacts. Um in response, my father's disability is severe. He's unable to walk. He's confined to a car or wheelchair. His ability to speak in his hands is severely impaired and is deteriorating over time. Number three, an accommodation uh is necessary to allow people opportunity to use and enjoy the property. Uh in response, there are several reasons why it's necessary for my father to have a wider driveway access to the street. Um first, he requires extra width in the driveway to allow uh the deployment of a ramp from his modified ramp, which kind of goes back to the science of L P. Um there has to be enough space for him to maneuver onto and off of that ramp. Uh and second, he requires uh 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 every day the help of an aide. That means that uh his van and another car will regularly be parked in the driveway and either vehicle should be able to pull on or off the driveway without having to move the other one. Uh number four, the requested accommodation is reasonable. Uh we believe this accommodation request is reasonable. Uh for one, it's the minimum reasonably necessary change, um because there is no street parking permitted in front of the property. Um wider driveway access will not affect any of our neighbors, as we discussed. Um this change will not fundamentally undermine the town's overall zoning scheme or impose undue administrative burden or expense on the town. Um and and as the town manager said, it could be conditional on the length of my parents' residence on the property at the town certified. But thank you again for your time and consideration and um.
Thank you very much. You you can just stay there. That'd be good. Okay, thank you, Council President Circo. Uh well, first of all, I would say thank you uh to your father for his service. Appreciate that. And I appreciate you um explaining why this accommodation is necessary for this specific condition. The only question I have might actually be more informed by the town manager or for both of you, but town code, section one twelve dot five, it's that for new construction or for the construction or replacement of the driveway, a stormwater drainage plan shall be submitted with the application. I don't believe there is a stormwater drainage plan included in this application.
Correct. Uh I'm sorry, um.
So why not? Uh what? And 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 I also know that such a plan would help address the uh the neighbors concerned about.
Well, the the reason we didn't is because it 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 didn't meet the substantive criteria
that requires the stormwater permit. So it's been our practice in the past to not not require a stormwater plan when we don't require a stormwater permit. It's on, it's under one hundred fifty square feet.
Right, but but this, but this session doesn't reference that one hundred fifty square feet. What is your interpretation on? What section, President Circo, one twelve, range five, application form? And just my calls, I'm thinking about it in large part because of the neighbors' letter, so. That's going on the drainage plan, why it address those concerns and everyone on behalf of the community ahead. Who else? As one is researching, I'm happy to go around. I don't have any questions.
Well, but maybe that's like a good job, I see.
Jeffrey, can you explain to Daniels what, when it was their turn? This as far as been raising her hand, when you talked to her, can you let her know what the criteria is?
Right.
I I e- I messaged them.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Can can you hear us, Dan Davis?
Yes, but I I I believe I uh sent you a message that there will be an opportunity for resident comments after the council.
Oh, okay, we'll wait.
Okay, I mean.
So there there is a requirement in the code as stated also for new construction or for the construction or replacement of driveway, a stormwater drainage plan shall be submitted with the application. But as the town manager noted, there's no criteria tied to that specific requirement. We do have specific requirements for water drainage plans where construction does involve hundred and fifty square feet of new and previous surfaces. And we have a requirement that uh new driveways or replacement driveways be installed with permeable pavers. So then the council will have to interpret what this requirement means. A stormwater drainage plan shall be submitted, but there's no actual criteria in the code for what that plan should include.
So but does the, does the, I think maybe your question also is, does the does the, can the council make better condition?
So the the council can, yes, make that a condition of approval. The council would would need to specify what that plan should include. And as you indicated, the code doesn't actually say what that stormwater management has to achieve. Right, just. There needs to be one. Technically, the the plan could be we're not doing anything or we're installing or retaining wall or. I just want to get that out there for our consideration. Thank you very much, Robin.
You're welcome.
Right, we actually, I will note that I did visit the site this afternoon to have a look at it because it was in the plan. I decided it wasn't quite a normal driveway. And it's not at the moment. I'll describe that. But uh the main thing I noticed is that Fallstone has been rebuilt. In other words, the mess of resulting from the water being break has gone. The road has been relaid and it now is as new. Um just not quite in time for school opening, but very close. Um the area to be extended is, as you look at the house um from the street to the left side, front of the driveway, it is at a very low point of the house and yard. Uh it's on a hill. And basically, the the water running off from there runs down the street to the storm drain that was just rebuilt. Um it's very close to there. Um I read this as a minor modification to the existing driveway rather than a replacement driveway. Um so I do not really see a stormwater plan as required. Um my own impression is that no water will get into the neighbor's yard from it because it is so low already in the forty seven oh two that it's simply just going to go into the street and nowhere else. But I I do absolutely ask that the builders or the the driveway um constructors um take care to ensure that there is no runoff to the neighbors at that point. I don't think it was going to be.
So is that a question?
Yeah.
I I can still let us question. You ensure that there'll be no runoff to the neighbors. Uh I think I used to my parents and say, we'll do uh everything we can to ensure that, I mean, once we talk, I'm not an expert, but I I I don't see any reason why we're going to be able to ensure that.
And I think it's easy because it is really at the low point and I I don't think there'll be much problem.
Yeah, it's it's just, it's just gonna divert water into the street a few feet to where it does now.
Okay, can I sort of have?
Um, welcome to your parents. I think they're they're lucky to come and have you around the corner. They're lucky for you too. Um my my question is this, is that you, the top of that driveway is pavers. And I don't know why it's not being extended, you know, for the rest, you know, for the new part. Because even though Robin makes a point that maybe the water won't go over to the Daniels' house, it just might. And those of us that lived here, live here and have been in affected by water, you know, you just, we don't know for sure. So that's why I'm basically saying you need to do everything you possibly can just in case. Because you don't, it's easier to fix it now or or to make plans for it now than later when it's flooding, it possibly flooding their basement. I I don't know. And so I I would like to encourage us to make there, and there be a plan. If pavers, continuing the driveway, pavers isn't the right thing to do, so be it. But we need to do something. I think we need to ensure the Daniels that it doesn't, it doesn't not affect them. That's all.
I agree. Okay.
Yes, that's it.
Yes, member Kumar.
I have a question for the town team and then a question for for the applicant, for Doug. Uh maybe I'll start with Doug. You know, I can't see you, Doug, by the way, but uh I can see your folded arms. Uh there you are, okay. Um I I was wondering, uh I understand that with the the recent overflowing, um you know, that there was some damage to your to this driveway as well, or the water that flowed into that driveway. And and so you've had to already do some recent work to fix that up. Could you ca- catch us up on what happened to your driveway? Robin described what happened to the street. Fix that up, could you ca- catch us up on what happened to your driveway, Robin described what happened to the street? But I remember being there when it was happening and there was fair bit of water. That flowed towards the house, if I'm not mistaken, onto the driveway, and I don't know if there was any damage from that.
Um thanks for that question, uh we were very fortunate, my parents are very fortunate, there was no that big damage, um. So water did back up uh up the driveway and got a little bit under the garage door and up into the garage. But it it a high watermark was below the door into the house, so. There was no intrusion of water to us, the worst that happened was we just had some silt uh on the driveway after after the water dried.
And it kind of drained out uh uh naturally, okay. And then, you know, a question for the team, it sounds that, looks like that this driveway, the the property line. Wet, if I can use that phrase, is already double the normal? Is that right?
No, I I I'm sorry for the confusion there, it's that the the driveway at its. Uh at its widest is twenty one feet, but the the current apron is ten feet. So what they're, what what when Mr. Rand and his uh what his parents are requesting is. To essentially keep the twenty one foot width.
All the way to, all the way to the street and there's an actual aproning that happens, which extends it to thirty one.
Exact, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you for that clarification.
Um so are you, so when you guys um are looking to do this, are you gonna be. Removing those pavers and then redoing the driveway just all in concrete?
That's a great question, I haven't talked to my parents about that yet, um I mean, I I bet them to the assumption that all the. New modifications would be concrete unless there's an important reason to make them neighbors for water flow management, I mean, we're sure there are other things to do.
Well, I was just looking at a picture, um it looks like maybe from the listing of it, and I just didn't know. You know, if that part's gonna be ripped up as permeable and then replaced with the straight concrete.
If it's preferable to keep it permeable, keep it permeable, there's no, there's no reason to rip it up.
Yeah, it would definitely be preferable, I would say, right, I mean, and there's no, is there any problem with like it being permeable with a wheelchair?
Just a matter of having two parking spaces.
Okay. And then are you guys gonna continue that the the wall that goes down or no? There's like a stone wall, it looks like on the side.
There's a stone wall that right now does not go all the way to the sidewalk.
Right.
If there were a really compelling reason to do it for water management, you could do it.
Well, I mean, I, you know, it, because of like. The way that the land kind of, it's it's up a little bit right there, and so, you know, if you were to flatten that out. You might find, you know, that wall probably holds back water. Into that neighbor's yard a little bit, and you might find that there's more water than that would seep through, do you want to see my guy? Oops, sorry. So like, see how that goes like that?
Yeah.
So if you flatten all that there. You know, you definitely want to make sure that then the water funnels that way instead of funneling that way. And so you'd maybe have to even do like a a burn or something or whatever those are called, I'm not sure. You know, in that, in that slot in order to try to keep it, cause it, cause right now it. You know, this blocks water from here, right? From the looks of it, so I was just wondering, um you know, cause if you flatten all that. Out and just make it down, it's gonna change this flow here. Cause you're gonna want that water to flow into the street instead of into that neighbor's yard.
Yeah. Yeah, once we, once we get the experts in to figure it out, if we're given permission, we'll make.
Oh, so you guys don't have like a plan or whatever yet?
No.
Okay. Oh yeah, so that's something that I would think that we should probably look to incorporate within the plan.
Well, you can talk about that when you discuss, but do you, but do you want to ask the applicant about that?
I just did, I think. Yeah, okay, so you guys would, so so you'll be mindful of um. That kind of like slope change or whatever that will be right there and then along with the permeable, I mean, obviously having permeable is definitely favored.
Yes.
Um if it doesn't work out, you know, for. For certain reasons of um. You know, a wheelchair can't get over, I don't know, I'm not sure how it works, but your people I'm sure would be able to tell you that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, so we we will now open the floor for public comments, we ask those making public comments. Please be respectful of the council's time and keep all testimony, evidence relevant to the application at hand and not be repetitive. Who has raised their hand?
The the Daniels uh are joining us online. That raised their hand, um Ms. Daniels, just make sure to please unmute yourself before you start making your comments.
Okay, hi, good evening everybody and like, like, like Debbie was saying, I'm welcoming. Um Doug's parents, I met his mother when she visited and I'm looking forward to have her as a neighbor. And I just want to be sure because it really is, you know. Adjacent to our property, you know, they, I I did provide the. Matt this afternoon with our property line to measure, I've never gone and measured stuff, but I want and. And the water problem is a problem in that area because. Just for, I've been living in this house for forty six years and what I have experienced and just letting you know. That our property was cut, you know, their property is higher and they cut. They 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 land, you know, they went deeper. And we found that there are some sprinkling water, how do you call them, the water that come up, you know, from um. Ground, yeah, so it's very sensitive in that corner of of the property. I would love much to read the letter or give the letter to everybody what we wrote, rather than waste your time listening to it. Because we were very uh proactive of of. Making sure that our basement is dry and it has been dry for over thirty five years. I really want to keep it going. And so, I don't want to take more of your time, but I would like Matt to give. Every one of you the letter, including to.
Yeah, Verda, Verda, everybody, Verda, everybody has the letter, so it's the.
Okay, so then, okay, so the other thing I wanted to add to the letter that there are spring waters also there, so. Whatever you dig, you may find some spring water, so that's, that's what I can, I can tell you from from. Living in this property for forty six years, so.
Well, thank you, thank you for appearing tonight.
Finding out exactly, because I remember with Janet Chrysler, the tree. We we, the town was planting some um. Cherry blossom trees and we said, why don't we put another tree and I think it's on between the property, I think. I'm not sure, I would like somebody to survey it and be sure. Where it is, where is my property and where is the the driveway which which could be in. In coaching, so that's the only thing I'm asking, but. I definitely.
Tree needs to be protected.
Yeah. Apparently, after after the the bus's accident with the water thing, some of the roads are cut. I just, I think the town should look at those trees so they don't die, that's all.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you to any other citizen who wish to comment.
That is it, correct.
Okay, so I I think now we can give uh the Rans, the in case they want to. Respond to any of the comments. I think you might have, I think you might have responded, that that there's your opportunity, if you want to say anything to the uh your nicknameers.
Oh, uh no, uh thank you, uh we really appreciate uh knowing the history of uh both properties a little better. We'll certainly uh and work with you and all the, you know, experts we can bring to bear to make sure that. Uh everybody's uh basement stays dry and that the the water stays where it wants.
Okay, well, thank you, so now this concludes the public portion of the hearing, the record is now closed. And the council may now discuss and deliberate on the basis of fact and conclusions of law and may vote on the application alternative. To the town manager and you you can rest now, thank you very much. Thank you, okay, this is an interesting little project, I should mean. That's a believe in, I I would like to make this project possible. Support residents with disabilities and support veterans. Um I note that our jointments provided. The only. Permeable area of note that's been affected is the little box labeled A. Box B is basically expansion where the sidewalk, last little bit of. Turn between the sidewalk and the street, so it's that section A. Which is not seen that significantly, I think it needs to protect the tree. I think we could. I don't know whether we can direct or we can, can't direct and we can recommend you to have. Uh permeable pavers uh where possible. My understanding of the code is that. Permeable pavers and the wall cannot be extended into the town's driveway, so. They can't reach all the way to the sidewalk, they can only come within about ten feet of the curb. There's just limits on how much can be done in that regard.
How much space would that be?
I think we're. We're talking about half of section A would. Could be made with permeable papers, just. Let's start to do this.
A already is papers.
No, A is on or plants anyway. Yes, it's the brick driveway that I think is.
Above A is.
So B is the is the brick driveway now. Right here.
Yes, this this area here.
But that's the driveway.
There's a concrete drive on one half and a brick on the other.
Yeah.
And I don't know if the brick.
And this one wall.
The brick, brick might just be decorative.
Oh, it's not necessarily permeable.
Not necessarily permeable, I I just don't know. Uh so those are my thoughts.
A is the only area that's going to be changed from current planting. To concrete or paper, it is, it is a very small area. The 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 larger area is taking over the sidewalk, the driveway. That that's that and that's replacing concrete with concrete, you know, so that's not changed. The other point that I was trying to make when I spoke originally is that this is also the low point in the yard. So that water is gonna flow down to the street from here, there's nowhere else for it to flow, um. It's actually below the neighbor's house at this point, I believe also. So I I have, I have very little concern about it and I am very much uh. A leader on stormwater mitigation, but I honestly see very little extra stormwater going to be generated by this particular change.
Thank you, Ron, do you know, is is that little blue circle, is that the tree that we've been talking about?
This could be a tree protection.
Ask Dr. Tyler to provide a tree protection plan at some point, yes.
I guess, you know, I've been looking, Shannon has a picture of the house up, just. Because this doesn't do a lot for me, this picture, I'm not good at that, um but I. I just think we should um. When they make, when they get, I think we should, of course. Let that drive, let them have that the driveway. And when they bring in their people to design it, maybe they come back with their plan and doesn't have to come back to us, but maybe to Matt. And Matt makes sure that it makes sense, does that make sense, are we allowed to do that? We're allowed to ask for that sort of thing?
So. Think you hate it when I say this, but you can have a a decision with conditions, but you can't have a conditional decision. You can't leave open a question as to whether or not something's appropriate for a future day. But you could impose a condition like. You're approving the application subject to the following conditions. That there be a tree protection plan. That. If you find it necessary. Such water or. Box A be made with permeable pavers. Unless it conflicts with, well, shoot.
Can we say instead? That, yeah, yes, we're gonna approve this. But final approval comes when they, after they've, they've made their design with their contractor and Matt. And and Matt looks at, make sure it's all okay, no?
I don't think so, no, but I mean, you you could. Request the applicant to have. Actual plans drawn up by a contractor. With the recommendation that it include permeable pavers to the extent necessary and stormwater. Drainage. Provisions to the extent necessary and then the council could approve it at a subsequent meeting. I certainly understand that the applicants want to know before they bear all those expenses, whether the council is gonna approve a reasonable accommodation, but perhaps the. Applicant would take comfort tonight in the general discussion the council has had that is generally supportive of the request.
Well, I I think we need to approve. This accommodation. With a caveat that we'd like to see the plan. Of what it's gonna be, how how they're gonna do it, we do that, no?
We can't do that.
Okay.
Will we continue it, and as you said. I I think discussion is pretty clear that we're supportive of it, although we haven't heard from several council members. Camper? Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I was gonna say that, um you know, from my perspective, I I'm in favor of. The redesign of the driveway, so the apron is wide enough. For what it looks like for the vehicle, specialized vehicle, the van basically to be able to come up and down. That driveway, I think that's the fundamental, so there's a nice turning. Option for them, I think that makes sense to me, I think in terms of the um. Material, in part because I think the driveway already is twenty twenty one feet. Wide, they're not widening the driveway, they're just extending it out with the natural apron, so. You know. It not only is it a special circumstances, but it doesn't feel like a extraordinary sort of widening. Of that that surface and that uh that space, so it kind of adds up for me and I think it makes sense. I think in terms of what the materials are for A and B in our drawings. And and effectively the area that is currently the sidewalk. I I'm, uh you know, I've been hearing the conversation and the desire to have a permeable surface. I'm just wondering what that might look like. On the sidewalk section. Uh and 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 you know, how how does that play out, because we would like be walking upon that sidewalk and then there'll be a section. That is potentially permeable, I'm not sure how, what we think of that, and I'm trying to think through that, and then the third thing I would say is that. There is a point in the applicant's note, the fi- final point that says that this should be conditioned on the duration of their state. And I'm wondering if that is something we we want to consider, I definitely think we may want to consider that if. That that left section is permeable all the way down. Because uh like extending out the current left section, that's pavers, because that would be very unusual over the sidewalk. And over the apron. Relative to what we see, you know, elsewhere in the town, so I'm I'm wondering. If that's sort of condition on the duration of their state for what it's worth. So that it can go back to what we typically see in the town, those are my three comments right now.
Yeah, I I just want, I I've asked if I can. That I, I didn't really understand the picture, Camper, and I had no intention of making permeable, permeable stones. Onto the sidewalk, I just thought the length of the driveway, that should be permeable. But definitely not into the sidewalk with the apron.
So the section A, so section A. That is currently parted area when they make that side, make it.
Yeah, wherever, wherever, wherever it ends to the sidewalk, that's it's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I get it.
Of the house, like.
Yeah.
You see where that natural break would be.
Got it, I think, I think that adds up, that adds up, I think that's reasonable. And we should perhaps, as Ron's advice, put that as part of our approval if others are amenable to that.
Let let me try a motion then to approve.
Really? Shannon has spoken.
All right.
Um so does this have to be uh permitted by Montgomery County because it involves like their street? permitted by Montgomery County because it involves like their street?
North Street.
So it does not?
It's mine, well, is Doug on the line? It's my understanding the county does not issue driveway apron permits for municipal streets.
Okay. Um, and then yeah, I think that to Kabir's point, you know, so like if you, if you see the picture of the house, like the permeable is like up, up here. And so you'd want to continue that permeable down to the sidewalk and then go with regular concrete so that it looks like a sidewalk. And then my other thing that I was gonna say is, um, because, I mean, I do, I do think that you know, one of the reasons, you know, or the main, the reason why we would look to make this concession right now is, you know, for um, the wheelchair and stuff and I don't, you know, if someone else moves into the house after and wants to do something with the house. That would be, you know, different. You know, I don't know what are, what we can say as far as like, you know, kind of grandfathering that driveway in.
Well, rather than I think discuss that earlier.
Yeah, you want, you want to?
Sure, yeah. So an option is that the town could require execution and recordation and land records of a public access agreement. Municipalities in the area do this for when residents want to do something special in the right way. The permission is documented in an agreement that's recorded in land records so that subsequent owners know what the agreement was. And the agreement would say, for example, the town has granted permission to this particular applicant for a wider driveway. But once a subsequent owner is in the property and seeks to replace that driveway, it's got to be replaced in accordance with town specifications in effect at that time. That, that's an option.
I definitely think we should do that option.
Agreed.
Town manager had a good idea as well to perhaps get us past the, the struggles we're dealing with now. The, the council could approve the application with box A being permeable pavers or fifty percent of box A being permeable pavers. And if the applicant later determines that that's not feasible, the applicant could come back and request reconsideration of that condition.
Of course.
Yeah.
Can I try the motion? Are you, are you ready, Kabir? Yeah, try your motion.
All right, I have motion to approve the, um, building permit applications submitted by Mark Ron, Ron and Ron, the construction driveway. Modification at forty-seven oh two Olson Avenue. One, um, this approval is granted as part of the accommodation for disabilities expressed in by the applicant. Two, this approval convey, does not convey to future owners. Three, we expect the area A identified in their plans to be replaced by permeable pavers. Or, um, this condition also requires a tree protection plan or the tree shown on their plan.
Does that include the what?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Does that have to be specified?
Okay. Does not convey, I mean, okay.
Ron, does this, that, sorry, does this include what you were saying about the land record?
Yes, that's how I
Okay.
understood that.
So this is legally and technically sufficient, so.
It is, Mr. Mayor. I would just add to condition number four, that it's a tree protection plan as recommended by the town arborists.
Okay, you're, you're coming. Okay, is there discussion? Hearing none. All this. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Senator, yeah. Welcome to the tent. Okay, our next item is to another public hearing. Do you consider approval of a building permit application submitted by Peter Lustig on behalf of Lustig Associates? LLC for the construction of a new home on the property located at fifty-five twenty-eight Trent Street. So we will begin. This is a continuation of the prior hearing before the town of Somerset Council for permit application. Number two, two, three, seven, N C one, N. Do you consider approval of a permit application for the demolition and construction of a new home at the property located at fifty-five twenty-eight Trent Street? Is submitted by Peter Lustig representing Lustig Associates LLC. The hearing will observe the following order. The Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant and their representatives will present their application. Next, the Somerset Town Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application. The council should introduce all findings of fact during their comments or questions. Next, other interested parties, including town residents, will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff only, or make comments to the council applicant or staff. Then the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. None new information shall be considered as submitted for the record after this point. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council then make a motion and approve the decision. We will now begin this hearing with the presentation of the Somerset staff findings and reports, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as Mayor said, this is a continuation of the hearing for new construction at fifty-five twenty-eight Trent Street. Uh, the applicant submitted an updated site plan and stormwater plan on August tenth and requested continued hearing be held at this September council meeting. Uh, following last month's hearing, the town stormwater consultant, Chris Step from Bayland, have recommended to the applicants that they provide treatment for driveway runoff and eliminate a dry well in favor of town E S D. Uh, in, in favor of a town defined E S D device, uh, such as a rain garden, uh, in response to council, uh, feedback. The applicant's revised site plan uh, replaces to the two front yard drywells with a large landscape infiltration. Uh, with, uh, with, in, excuse me, with landscape infiltration. In addition, the applicant, uh, added a trench along the driveway to divert water and directed towards the landscape infiltration. And the updated application provides for five hundred fif- uh, five hundred eighty-five point four cubic feet of water to be treated on site. And the town code requires five hundred eighty-five point two cubic feet to be infiltrated on site. So in other words, the, the proposal captures, uh, might be over cubic feet more with the recommended one-year storm event. Um, and, um, perhaps more to the point, better lines with the town's tiered preference for E S D devices. Um, I included a checklist for the, the council. And, uh, one item that was addressed by the applicant that was brought up at a previous hearing, but that I didn't include in the spreadsheet is whether the existing house contains asbestos. And the applicant, uh, can expand on this, but submitted an asbestos inspection, uh, which found that there were asbestos containing materials in, in the house. Um, so I, I am, uh, recommending a permit condition for the council to consider to alleviate concern. Um, and in conclusion, the town staff evaluated the proposed construction project application and has found that it complies with the requirements of the town code and therefore recommends approval of the application with the conditions listed, uh, as such. Number one, that a wall check survey be submitted within twenty-four hours of receipt by the applicant. Number two is that a height check survey be submitted within twenty-four hours of receipt by the applicant. Number three is that the project, uh, shall comply with the town arborist recommended reforestation plan. Number four is that the landscape infiltration, uh, utilizes native plants in accordance with the Maryland Design Manual. Um, and that the applicant, uh, should consult the town, uh, stormwater consultant on specific selection of plants before installation. Number five is that the applicant shall execute a maintenance agreement drafted by the town attorney binding the owners and subsequent owners uh, of the lands, uh, per the town code. And number six, that all asbestos containing materials are handled, abated and removed in accordance with state, federal and all other applicable regulations and guidelines. Um, I know that we have, uh, our town building, uh, uh, engineering consultants and, um, as well as Chris Step, our stormwater consultant. I don't know if, um, Doug, you have anything to add first and then Chris, uh, give you a chance as well.
No, that's it.
Hey, Chris, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to the staff report this time. I think you just, you just muted yourself, so I I think you're one button off. I see you unmuted, but we're not hearing anything, Chris.
So now we will ask the applicant to, um, you don't have to make a complete presentation, but any new information that you want to add. And also if you have any comments on the latest staff recommendations. Thank you for being here tonight. Remember to identify yourself for the record.
Uh, Pete, Peter, I, you're, you're muted. If you don't mind just unmuting yourself first.
Hi, it's Peter Lustig. I'm sorry for the, uh, for the problem there. Um, uh, my civil engineer, uh, Jeff Robertson, I can speak to the, uh, stormwater management, um, changes we have submitted. I, um, I had, uh, as, uh, Matt, um, said, a, uh, survey done about the asbestos and there's just, just a little bit in there, but it will be, um, uh, abated, uh, to, uh, you know, to conform to the industry standards. I, I just feel that we've, we've, um, you know, we've really covered, um, your concerns with respect to the, uh, stormwater uh, management runoff and, um, you know, have created a, you know, a large, um, area in the front yard um, which will collect, um, I believe a hundred percent of the of, of, of the water, the root water and the, uh, in addition to well over half of the driveway runoff. But, um, I will leave, uh, the, the, the technical, um, aspect of this to, uh, to, uh, Mr. Robertson from CAS Engineering, um, if there are any further questions regarding that.
Stuart, does, does he want to make a presentation? He just wants to answer questions?
I, I, I'm, I'm not certain. I, I are you there, Jeff?
Yeah, hi, Jeff Robertson with CAS Engineering. Uh, I'll just make a brief, uh, a brief statement. Um, so the, the plans have been revised as Matt has indicated, uh, drywells A and B in the front have been deleted and replaced with a landscape infiltration facility in measures about a hundred and thirty-two square feet in size. Um, the facility is a, uh, a depression in the front yard. Um, it's got berms on the low side of the, of the lot to contain the runoff. Uh, there's about a one and a half foot uh, height differential, uh, between the surface of the facility and the berm. Uh, there's a, uh, trench drain now proposed to pick up some of the driveway runoff and direct it into the facility. Uh, and the lead walk in the front and a little bit of the front yard also drain into the facility. Um, so there's some, some added treatment there for the, for the walk. The, um, the plans are, are processing through Montgomery County currently for a revision to their, uh, plans and permits. So we, we hope to um, you know, have town council approval and then, uh, officially uh, resolve the revision with the county and obtain that, obtain that permit. Um, happy to answer any other questions that anyone may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Council President Sirco.
Thank you. I've got, uh, well, first off, I want to, uh, thank the applicant for um, modifying the, uh, the, the building permit designed to incorporate um, a rain garden or infiltration device. Um, that said, I have some, a number of concerns with the proposal that I'd like to go through. Well, trying to work through, uh, town staff to, to sort out really what's going on and why we're proceeding the way we are. So first off with Doug, I want to look at the driveway. We discussed the driveway at the last meeting. And we heard from the applicant's engineer that the as-is grade of the property is about four and a half degrees. Um, we heard from the town attorney that that meant that the requirement for a permeable driveway applied. So my question, Doug, is why are we accepting this concrete driveway?
I think I can answer that. Because, uh, my understanding was that the town attorney said that the council could interpret it that way. But the way their code is currently written is that all new or replacement driveways must be constructed of permeable materials. This requirement shall not apply to the following. And the, the applicable part is a driveway having a slope of five percent or more. So our staff, our staff evaluation was this complies with the code. The council has it within their right to put on permit conditions as they see fit, but it fits the code according to the TAC code language.
Wait, I don't understand that.
Because, because the contractor is building up a slope. So it goes to seven degrees. Now the requirement for permeable driveway disappears. It's the silliest starting.
Because, but that means that they're raising the house.
That's the other thing I wanted to get at. So Doug, when I do a little bit of trigonometry and I'll look at the driveway going from four and a half degrees to seven degrees, doesn't sound like a lot. It's actually two and a half degrees over a distance of maybe fifty feet or so from the curb. So we're talking about an increase in the landscape of I, I can't call it my calculation, so a foot and a half or something. The county code is quite clear on calculations of building height. If we go to the county code, uh, average grade is calculated. So I guess the question is, Doug, do we have the average grade calculated for the pre-development land site in accordance with DPS code?
I didn't, I did not count it that way and I'll repeat what Matt said, that the code refers to the slope of the driveway.
I'm not talking about the driveway now. Sorry, let, let me, let me clarify the question. I'm talking about that house. The, the building heights, we looked at the uh, checklist that the town staff provided. The, uh, building height is, where's the building listed?
And I, I, I think I understand your question. The building height is measured from the average front grade of the house either at the pre-construction level or the post-construction level, whichever is lower. They take that as a starting point and then they take the either the peak or the mean elevation determine the height for the county's requirements. And that's what they've done on this property. So the, the height is based on the grade at the front of the house, either pre-development or post-development.
When I look at their drawings, it appears that.
When I look at their drawings, it appears that the height is based on post-development. Uh, can the applicant clarify?
Well, the applicant made the numbers and, yeah.
Uh, the, the average grade determinations reflected on the, on the approved plans, on the site plans. Um, it's based on Montgomery County criteria and it's an analysis of existing versus proposed grade. Along the front of the house whereby the lower of the two grades is utilized. Um, so it's a floating analysis, uh, if you will, that's prorated across the front of the building.
Can you direct me to that in the drawings? I could not find that.
Left side of the site plan.
Oh, the site plan, I was looking at the building elevation drawings. Left side of the site.
Well, the height of the house is on the architectural plans. The calculation for average grade is, is on the civil plans.
So, so you did calculate average grade?
I did.
Okay, thank you, I just could not find it. Thank you on that, the, uh, the next time I want to talk to you, maybe this would be for, Chris Step, if Bayland is, is he available?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, great, so I'm looking at, um, I'm, I'm trying to understand the, capacity and the, uh, acceptability or utility of the proposed, the proposed device, infiltration device. And I'm looking, so one is location of the device, and I look at the DPS standard that says, infiltration systems must be located at least twenty feet horizontal distance from basement walls and ten feet from slab-on-grade structures. And I look at the site drawing and it appears to me, that it is eighteen feet from the building. Can you clarify the situation?
The, you want to, sorry, can you repeat that one more time? I, I just had a, I couldn't quite carry it.
So, it's, it's my understanding from the staff checklist that, that Bayland reviewed the application and found the proposed landscape infiltration device acceptable. So I'm asking, why are you considered acceptable when the distance from the landscape infiltration device to the house is, eighteen point three feet on the draw?
And, and what was the reason that you gave first? Sorry, I, I couldn't hear the first bit of what you said.
County code, based on the state standard, is that infiltration systems must be located at least twenty feet from basement walls.
Because this, this system is, um, ME, to the MEP. So that's maximum extent practicable, so they've placed it as far away from the building as possible.
Okay, um, thank you. I would think just for my colleagues that we're then talking about Chris, request for a waiver for not meeting some aspect of the code. They might have good reason, but they're not meeting it. But it kind of, I, and maybe we don't have the authority to waive it, can't you? I have some other questions first. Did the applicant provide, this is also for Chris, did the applicant provide, a, um, does a safe non-erosive outlet loadout hole must be provided, safe conveyance of the developed ten-year storm through the facility must be demonstrated. How is, how did the applicant demonstrate that?
The non-erosive will be sheet floor exiting the facility.
So we'll just roll off?
Correct.
Okay. I know that there's no description of, well, first off, soil, what, what, uh, soil are they, are they building or using, what is the soil suitability?
The soils.
But I, I, I tried to do, I've looked at doing a rain guard in my house, which is just down the street from this house. And I worked with the county and I had to do a perk test. Unfortunately, my soil filled the perk test, so I could not put in, a rain garden that would receive, you know, reimbursement from the county. The only soil test I'm aware of for this application, were deep holes five feet deep, to support the installation of drywells. But this is landscape infiltration. I don't think that there's, I, it's, I'm a professional engineer, but this is not my area of expertise, but I would not, assume that the soil of five is the same as the soil of the states. And the county, uh, directions from DDP says, that the applicant should provide soils information to support the use of landscape infiltration. The measured infiltration rate in the general vicinity of the facility is less than point, point, point five two inches per hour.
Well, the, the soil's going to be, the soil's being excavated, if you look at the detail on the second page, you can see that they're removing the in-situ soils. And then they're placing in, um, you know, other soils, which Planning Media's, um, sand gravel and had another sand layer, so, um, they're bringing those soils in.
That's only for the device itself, the, the code talks about the need for the soil around it to absorb the water.
Correct.
My, okay, right, county code, right? Yeah, it says county code, I mean, that's for the county. But, but it's, it's for us. I don't know how close the county looks there, this stuff. But it's not, you can, okay, here's the right to ask question. You'll get it, okay. Plantings. All plantings should be in accordance with county code, all plantings should be in accordance with Montgomery County landscape guidelines, all landscape plans must be sealed by registered landscape architect. I do not see that here.
Yeah, there's those, that's what Matt had said in the beginning, that the landscaping hasn't been submitted yet for these plans.
Okay. When I, thank you, when I try to calculate, and again, I, not, I'm certainly not, uh, familiar with or expert on stormwater management, but, when I look at this infiltration device, and I use what the code tells me, where you assume zero point four velocity for all of the different materials. The proposal is a hundred and thirty-two square feet, uh, hole, if you will, offload hole. I calculate that the device can hold two hundred sixty-four cubic feet. Which is less than what other people calculated, can you walk me through their calculations?
They, the, the calculations were provided on the second sheet, I didn't, I didn't calculate the areas, I took their areas as, as provided. Uh, normally what, how it's done is you take the area and then the, the, the metric volume and then you have to multiply that by, point seven five, so you assume that is, that becomes a greater amount than the area provided because you're, accounting for the infiltrations that's going to occur over the twenty-four hour period while the device is functioning.
Right, that's infiltration into the soil around the device.
Correct.
Right, but we don't know what that soil is around the device. Okay, um, sorry, I'm, I'm just pressured by this, aspects of this. I also, the, the, the device is set up so that the drainage from roof sections, A and B go directly to the infiltration device. And the device is, is scaled to handle that. Um, I understand. What about, like, the rainwater that comes into this device? That eats up, so if we have a, if we have a one-year rain event, and we're dropping two point six inches of rain on the device, and then on the walkway above the device, it's just going to roll down into the device. It would seem to me that the device actually has less capacity, to handle the rainwater from the roof than designed, can you address that?
The device is sized for the drainage area to it. Which account, which also accounts for the area of the driveway and the area of the air right in front of it.
Okay, um, Ron. I know that, you know, our code specifies that, the device handle of water that comes off of the roof in a one-year storm event. But, and that's a pretty straightforward calculation with the driveway. But now we're talking about a device that is itself could be impacted by the storms. So is it proper or improper, for the council to consider the, the effectiveness of the device in those conditions? Pardon me while I read the town code. There's a lot of stuff, I'm just about done, thank you all for your patience. You know, I, I think it's probably, an engineering and scientific question, rather than illegal. The, the council needs to find that one-site infiltration is accomplished to the maximum extent practical. And I, I can't tell you from a, a, a scientific standpoint whether, infiltration, infiltration trenches or rain guards or the like are, signed, sized according to the design manual to include, rainwater or runoff from other, other areas.
Oh, and the, the surrounding soils, I knew I looked at this before, they are HSG, uh, HSGB soils, so they are appropriate for infiltration. I just couldn't find it and I couldn't remember what it was.
But, and, and where does that information come from?
That is on the site plan, if you see there, the soil divide line up there in the corner, it says the, H, H, it's two U C H S G B soils.
So they, so they took samples?
No, those, that's from the Web Soil Survey, that's for the US Geological Association, US Geological Services.
Which was acceptable, okay, thank you very much. I, I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Councilor.
Right, um, th- this is as much to Steve as anything. We cannot create double jeopardy for the applicants.
Okay, so you can sort of, now is your ch- chance to ask the applicant, that would be for debating.
Right, okay, I'm going to ask the applicant a following question. Um, imagine a four and a half percent slope, which is the slope of the driveway as it is currently, and make that permeable. Would that get anything like sixty-three percent of the rainwater captured by that permeable driveway? Or would the trench do much better than that, that you construct?
Uh, that question's for the applicant, correct?
Yes, or, or, um, Cass.
Um, I, I could, I could try to work through that calculation, I don't know off the top of my head, what the storage volume would be if the driveway were made permeable, because there's a, again, we talked about this at the last meeting a little bit, there's a area between the garage and, and say the beginning of where the permeable pavement could start that, that, that apron area, I think it's ten feet, is, is not made permeable. So, um, I'd have to run through that calculation, I could do that, please, as the council.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, can you do it in a couple of minutes while we're, discussing?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, all right. I have no other questions at the moment beyond what I said earlier that, I'm trying to stay on the town code, not county code, when reviewing this, and I do see this as following a town code, including our stormwater code.
Thank you.
I just have one easy question for Mr. Lustig. Have you sold this house yet?
I have not.
Are you advertising it already?
It is, it is, um, being marketed, yes.
Is that okay to market a house that, with the plans that have been, um, this is for the attorney, what, can you market a house where the plans haven't been accepted yet?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, Kabir?
Um, question for the applicant, Mr. Lustig, again, uh, as, as, Steve Zerko, Council President, mentioned, thank you again for, for reflecting the feedback from the last session and with the updated plans and your, patience and perseverance, you're very grateful for that, I just wanted to clarify. So, since the last proposal, you have replaced the drive wells with this, um, infiltration setup that we've just described, is that correct?
Correct.
And, to, to, yeah, and then what is the, the, uh, if you can just sort of for the record, and for just clarity, because there were, there were many areas we covered just momentarily. Ho- how much more, um, stormwater mitigation are we expecting from this change that you have proposed? Maybe Jeff can answer that.
I think Jeff needs to answer that question. If he's not too busy making.
Yeah, I'm, I'm doing some math, yeah.
I'm multitasking, um, yeah, give me one second here, that's, uh, that's on another drawing, um.
Don't you, only, I don't have a spreadsheet set up, Jeff, to just plug in numbers and?
Yeah, I do, I'm just trying to get it in front of me, I was in a different file.
I, I actually have that, if it's, if it's.
Go ahead, go ahead, yes, go ahead, Matt.
The, the old plan provided for five hundred eighty-three cubic feet. And the new plan provides for, uh, five hundred eighty-five cubic.
Okay, okay. Okay. And, okay, so that was one, just to kind of clarify, that I think part of the reason, this update was made, I think, was to some extent, the discussion guidance prompted, I think, by also Councilmember Barr last time. So, I, I'm, I'm considering this from where I stand. Um, you know, from sort of the, volume of water that's being mitigated, it's roughly the same, between, between the two proposals, so that's useful, useful to know. Um, I also, you know, wanted to kind of reiterate a question I had last time, which is, are we, um, i- is this, are, are, are these interventions, and maybe this is a question for Chris, are the interventions that we are seeing with this proposal, you know, an improvement from how stormwater runoff, roof runoff in particular, be, is being mitigated today? Uh, just again, for the record, uh, these proposals, an improvement from that, or are they net the same impact?
I believe that while the volume calculations show that it is in equivalent practice, that it is a net improvement because you're capturing a portion of the driveway that wasn't being captured before and treated. And the runoff from the driveway will have more pollutants than the other runoff that was originally being captured.
Great, thank you so much, no more questions.
That's where we're at.
Um, so, do we know, like, what's the, what is the one-year storm calculation as far as we're using, is it an inch?
Two point six inches.
Two point six inches. So, um, my understanding from this drawing, is that there is a significant amount of runoff that comes to this property, is that your understanding?
They, they have a map of the runoff that does flow to the property in the, in the plans.
That's right, right, so there's a significant amount of water that drains to this property. How is that water then calculated in terms of, the site plan? Or is it? I guess it's not, right?
No, wait, no, our, 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 our code, our code provides for the, the water, we should provide for infiltration. We should provide for infiltration of a one year storm event for the rooftops of new construction.
Right, so so it doesn't, we're not looking at the impacts. Of the water that also comes into this property.
Our code doesn't require any mitigation for salts or water that comes from a different property.
And so for this water that also comes into this property and is met with, you know, the current design of the house, which is a lot smaller than. The future design of this house, where does that water go?
Well, I it it goes around the house, um. I assume, um. Some some of it will be absorbed. But there really isn't a significant amount of water that's coming from the uh. Onto that property, I don't believe, certainly not on either side of the house. Um. There is a great difference in the rear of the house, but it's not significant.
Well, do we know how much like acreage it's calculated as?
That's a question for Jeff. I don't have the answer.
Three point two acres. Offsite drainage. In total.
Wait, did, I'm sorry, what'd you say, Matt?
Point, point, yeah, I'm sorry, point three two acres of drainage drainage offsite.
Because I know this house is flooded before. From my understanding. So, you know, I mean, it it's coming from someplace into this into this lot. And I guess my question is. Is this house being raised in elevation in relation to where it sits right now?
Yes.
And.
Not significantly.
No, that's correct. Not significantly, but it's been it's higher than the existing house.
And so if it's higher than the existing house and there's neighbors' houses on all sides of this. And the water is going to be more coming from, you know, it's meeting a house that is, you know, a lot more. Um, impermeable than it is right now. Would, I mean, won't that water then run off into the neighbors' lots more because the house is being raised from like the earth? And like it's gonna then create a slope into these neighbors.
Now, the the water drainage. Patterns currently go around the house, down the side yards, out to the right of way. Doesn't.
Right, but if.
Neighbors.
But if the land, if the house is being raised, how does that impact the land?
It doesn't.
Land stays the same. Essentially the same.
Um, maybe, is it Chris, Chris from Valant? Can you answer that question?
Yes, the applicant's correct. They're just raising their first floor elevation. The the. Grading around the house is is not changing in any substantial fashion. They're not raising it at all.
So like the land is gonna be flat to the land that it is right now.
More or less, yes.
What do you mean more or less, like?
Well, I mean, they're gonna do some earth moving to install the house and then they're gonna have to put it back, so it'll be almost identical.
And so how does that make sure that like who who checks that? Like, you know, because all of a sudden you can be having your earth elevation to your neighbors.
Contractor surveyor will will do check shots and make sure they build it correctly.
But does it skate that on the plans as to like that it's gonna be raised?
The house, yeah, the house says it's gonna be raised, though the first floor elevation shows.
Yep.
But does that include then the earth?
No, it's just the house. So they're just gonna build the house itself higher.
So the earth stays the same.
Correct.
Then why does the driveway change to?
Because the driveway has to meet the first floor or the garage elevation, which is being raised.
But if if the if the rainwater that comes down from like the other neighbors right now hits that driveway and that driveway, it's gonna be higher. So again, it's gonna go to the sides.
Correct, it'll go to the sides, but the 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 side. The side elevations of the lot are not changing, so the water's gonna run off the driveway. Well, first off, it's gonna run in the area of greatest slope, which is down the driveway, not across. So there's no cross slope for the driveway. So it's just gonna be running straight down the driveway, be collected by the trench train. But any water that would run off to the side would not make it to the. The adjoining property owner's house, because typically how you grade lots, this is for any, you know, one on one grading, is that. You have your houses up higher than the areas between the houses is lower to collect any runoff and then have that go, um, you know. Towards the street or towards the rear yard. In this, in this, in a sense, everything's going towards the front. You can see the grade arrows. And the grade spot shots to show that positive drainage, so that the. Developer and the engineer wants that to happen because they want the water to, you know, not flood the house. They want the water to run around the house. And then the way to do that is to have those sides of the yard graded so that the water flows, you know, where the water wants to go, which is towards the road.
And so then we'll just add more water then into the trench street.
Well, that's just what's happening currently, so.
That's the same, it's the same as what's happening now.
You're not changing the hydraulics of the system. The system hydraulics are remaining the same.
Yeah, but I mean, it 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 does change because we're looking at a different plot of lands than we're looking at it now. So it is gonna change. I mean, the 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 let, I mean, there's gonna be less green space and less trees. And less other areas in order to absorb.
That's why that's why there's stormwater management being provided.
But the stormwater is being provided for the house.
Correct.
Not being for the runoff that comes to that house.
Correct. You so you're talking about changes, the changes that are being affected is that the house is being, you know, improved. Therefore, they're providing stormwater manage for that. That's the only change. The runoff from the neighboring adjoining lots is not changing, so that's the static. That's that's gonna be a static, same as before and after. So nothing is changing with that amount of runoff.
But I mean, it's not necessarily static be changing before.
Static, it's one hundred percent static.
Static changing before and after because the house. Is gonna have more places that are not able to absorb.
So your your assumption right now is that water that's running off is running into the house and being accumulated and retained by the house itself? That's that's what I'm hearing.
No, what I'm saying is that if you have a, you know, a smaller house on a bigger plot of earth. That, you know, there's more places and more soil and more more trees, because I think there's like at least seven or eight trees that are being cut down.
That's not how you quantify stormwater management. You might assume that, but that's not how it's quantified.
So how will this, I how how will it affect the neighbors? We.
It's not, that's what I said already.
And, um. Is there, I mean, is everything being done on this property that can be done in terms of trying to collect more water from it?
I mean, that's that's a loaded question, in my opinion. You could always do more. I I I they meeting the they're they're meeting the code requirements for treatment of stormwater.
Well, if we're looking at, you know, I mean, we have. We have. Obviously, there's a lot, you mean, we put our stormwater management code in place for a reason. And so, um, you know, with the reason being that as as all these houses are getting kind of turned around, there's more and more and more water. In conjunction with climate change and, you know, you just wanna plan for the future and have a sustainable area where we're not just overflowed with water. So I guess the question to you is that, you know, is there, is there more that can be done here? That would really significantly impact some of this water runoff?
Like, I'm only here to say.
Can I jump in? Can I, I'm sorry, Chris, can I jump in? Because that's not, that's not what our stormwater consultant is looking at. So I don't think that's a fair question to put him on the spot. And that way, what we're evaluating is.
Okay, I can ask Mr. Robertson.
It it's.
Is there, is there more things that can be done to mitigate and control more water on this property?
Um. Probably, um, but there aren't any more environmental site design facilities that can be implemented and. On the property in accordance with. County and state criteria.
So it meets all of that. There's no runoff waivers or anything required?
No. Or proposed, no. I I will add that that the existing house footprint. Measures about two thousand and seventy square feet. And the proposed house footprint. Measures about twenty two hundred and forty square feet, so the proposed house is not significantly larger than what was there. Um. Additionally, there's no stormwater management on the site right now, so there is no slowing down of the water or treating or. Um, capturing and treating any of the water that's that's currently running. From the property, so. We're proposing, um. You know, essentially as a storage. Design that that. Puts five hundred and eighty five cubic feet of water into the ground. Which is considerably better than what was there previously.
Okay, I have another question.
Okay, I'm gonna go a second round. Council President. I had, I don't know if this is for, so so thank you all for your patience as we go through this, you know, this is. First, um. This is a significant. Building permit application, there are a lot of issues and we're trying to sort through them. Um, so so I do appreciate that. And a follow up question, I'm not sure if this is for Chris or Jeff, but they had to deal with. Um, permeable pavers and a permeable driveway and how close it can go to that house. And I've heard some comments made that you cannot have permeable pavers within ten feet of a house. And I just wanted to correct the record. Again, going to. Um. Uh, going to. Montgomery County Records, they they talked about working permeable pavers though. They can go right up to the house. The only thing, and you can have the the, um. The same layers of. Hill and crushed rock and sand underneath the pavers. The difference is that. If you're within ten feet of a basement. You have to have. Like, a plastic shield underneath all of that to direct some of the water away from the foundation of the house. But you still have the permeable pavers, water still soaking through just gets diverted away from the house. Um, that's my understanding of the code. Can either of you correct or confirm that? Yeah, for Chris.
I I'd have to look into that for you.
I was unmuting myself. Um, I'm looking at the, I I don't know, um. Councilmember Circo, if you're looking at the Montgomery County Department of Permitting Services guidelines or some other Montgomery County guidelines. Regarding permeable pavements, but I'm looking for the specifics now.
Wait, is the rain stage's technical design manual for permeable?
That's that's different than what Montgomery County Department of Permitting Services reviews and approves.
That, that's true, but I'd expect. I'm unaware of any conflict where Department of Permitting Services. Does not allow something that's recommended by the rain stage. And they have nice, nice drawing to show the the breakouts in the wall. What we should say.
Montgomery County requires permeable pavers to be ten feet from buildings.
Yeah, that's on their their code.
It's on their permeable pavement, permeable paving detail.
Well, that's a a technical issue that we have to. I can take up with Department of Permitting Services and revisit this question. If that's an issue. Um, I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you, Kev Sirgore. But the answer to my original question, which is. Which captures more water? The sixty three percent of the water that's captured from the driveway as posed or a. Permeable driveway constructed according to Montgomery County Code at four and a half percent slope.
So. It's not quite that easy, frankly, um, never, it never is, right? So. Let me, let me try to lay it out this way, so, um. A permeable. Paving driveway in this particular application would involve two hundred and ninety two, approximately two hundred and ninety two square feet of driveway. That's with the ten foot separation from the building.
Right.
Um. Montgomery County also requires in their permeable pavement details and an overdrain. For the facility. And that overdrain. Um, must flow to daylight on the property, so that is another limiting factor of how. Large and where the permeable pavement can be positioned, um. But if we just compare that we could be treating two hundred and ninety two square feet and and the proposal that you have. Currently. Um, let me get that PDF in front of me again. I think we were at two hundred and sixty two. Is that right? Two eighty eight, I'm sorry. So it's a roughly a four square foot differential.
Yeah, it it's about the same in fact.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Got your two last question.
Now with my question.
Okay, Kev, consider how I have any further questions.
I am, I'm wondering why you raised the house. You know, I I don't know, um. Did you, because I think raising the the house. The water is probably gonna impact the neighbors. I'm really, you know, I I'm really concerned about the neighbors. You haven't sold this house yet. And, um. You don't want the neighbors to hate the new owners, I'm sure, but I'm so wondering why you raise, why are you raising the house?
Well, well, the house, the house is not even as tall as the neighbor, as the neighbor has, uh, to the to the south. Um. We just need, you know. It's the the nature of the design where you step up into the into the house, um. It's not significantly higher than the existing house, the first floor. Um, Jeff could can speak to this, but I I think it's only a matter of. Several inches. Isn't it, Jeff?
So, so the house is raised for a couple of reasons. Number one, I did, and and a code, a code requirement. Um, stipulates that the top of the foundation wall should be six inches above. The adjacent grade and the high part of this lot is in the back. So if you if you notice on the site plan. There's a, there's a grade in the back. To the left and to the right of 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 the house, two ninety, um, so the grade directly behind the middle of the house is at two ninety one. Um, and the first floor is positioned at two ninety two, so. The house is only one to two feet above grade in the back. Now, the grade naturally drops towards the front of the house, so it, so it's a little bit higher out of the ground in the in the front. Um, but the positioning of the first floor was done so to. Um, to meet the code requirements and to provide positive drainage, um, through those side yards so that we. That we don't, um, create a drainage problem with either of the neighbors.
Okay, thank you.
Enter Kumar.
Thank you, um, I, you know, I don't have questions. On the stormwater mitigation aspect because as established at the last hearing and reiterated just now. The these efforts are an improvement from the current. Uh, property, which was the intent of this code, so I consider that a success. And then two, that the changes made from some of the last hearing, if I understood Chris correctly. You know, are a a meaningful, if if marginal but meaningful improvement. So that's an added success, uh, from what I can, what I can gather. I had questions for the town staff. Uh, Matt, can you just remind us again about the the neighbor feedback on this and. Um, the process I went through and what have we heard from from the neighbors? And the second is that we received a note from a resident about. And the second is that we received a note from a resident about potentially. A number of the existing trees. Being um that are being sort of slated for removal. Are potentially healthy. And so I just wanted to see if you had seen that because it was sent to the whole team. And if there's a view from from you or from your team, Matt.
Sure, so, um. See, uh. I have, um. Told words, tree reports, uh, the trees that are being removed. There is. Um, let's see. There are eight altogether. Um, but of those eight, five are are bushes. Uh, and one of them uh has existing decay at the at the base, so. There are two healthy trees that are being slated for removal. Doc Feather uh is requesting. Um, at least two canopy trees on the property and. Uh, replacement of all of the trees that are being removed with a mixture of canopy ornamental and evergreen trees. He also suggested to be the cherry trees. Um, does that answer your question on on the trees?
Yes.
Um, and then in terms of uh neighbors, um. I do not have any um. Any specific comments from neighbors, um, uh, either for or against the proposal.
Uh, but just to clear, the the, it's in the packet, but neighbors were informed and.
Oh, I'm I'm sorry, yes, so neigh- neighbors were emailed the the plans, um, we didn't get the signatures, but we 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 received. We got it digitally.
And could you just, just for the record, when exactly? They were emailed and what the updated plans emailed as well?
Um, they were originally emailed, uh.
Sorry, sorry about that, I just wanted.
No, sorry, I know, I'm sorry, I I don't have it right in front of me, so.
It it was many months ago. I can tell you that.
Yeah, um.
Several months ago.
Let's see. Uh, yeah, yeah, actually, um, the original plans. Were notified at the end of May, so, um. Looks like, yeah, May, May thirty-first. And.
And these updated plans that we are, that we are considering today, when would they notify?
We have only, we didn't know, we didn't send out a new notification because the the building itself didn't didn't change.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Councilor Roba.
I don't have any other questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Town Manager, is any resident or guest? No. Okay, thank you, this concludes the public portion of the hearing, the record is now closed, the council may now discuss and deliberate. And finds a fact and conclusions of law and may vote on the application. Now we'll turn it over to the council president to lead the discussion and decision.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I guess to to reiterate one of my previous comments, I do think that the builder has made substantial design changes. To improve stormwater management and I appreciate that. My, at this point, my. Our primary concern is with the driveway and because it requires a waiver. But, um. I'm not sure that is a reason not to.
Right, yeah, I I. I thank the, um. Builder and the design team are listening to us last time and or changing the plan, even though I know it means going back through the county. Get approval again and. Sorry about that. I real, I really do appreciate the efforts to capture the driveway runoff because as you pointed out, that is. More polluted runoff than from the roof because you're capturing the junk from cars that. Immolated on driveway. And so that. That is another significant improvement in the in 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 the application and and with. Conditions that have been described stated already, I'm willing to support the application.
I guess, you know, I know this is a question that we can answer, but. I wonder if from the get-go, they had had a permeable driveway planned. Would we have approved it? And would we, would we, would we be having this discussion over two? Two different meetings, this has been long, I also wonder if this house was smaller. Would have been easy to approve, this is a huge house. On a typical small lot. And, um. I hope, you know, Mr. Lustig, you come back before us again with another new house. You'll be more considerate of the size of the house vis-à-vis the the plot of the land. And the consideration of our neighbors, because I I think most of us here are all about our neighbors and, um. I don't feel like we've done that, that's not a reason not to approve it. But I just, just a little feedback, because maybe you'll be back before us, I'd like to make it easier for you.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie.
You know, I'm, I'm, um, as I was saying earlier, I think. I consider this a victory from the stormwater code perspective, because the existing lot is doing nothing. Uh, to mitigate the runoff from the roof. Um, that's the whole idea that we start chipping away at this problem with new construction. And I think we've, you know. I consider that a victory, for sure, just sort of quantifiable victory, for what it's worth. Uh, given the numbers we've considered on what's being mitigated here. I think the, um, in terms of the other areas of concern that come up when we are having these kinds of discussions, I'm glad we are. Having these, uh, you know, in our working sessions, looking at. Sort of comprehensive updates on other aspects of permitting. Including the size of the house and. Because I think we we need the code to give us the power to make these kinds of, you know, interventions and. Right now, we don't have that. And so, you know, I I I. It it seems impractical to me to try and sort of back into those without. You know, clear updates to the code. Uh, that's why we made the stormwater update, so that we do these hearings, we get smart about it, we come back, we tighten it if we need to. And I think that's why we need to take our energies and efforts coming out of hearing that back, so that's the second thing I would say. I think the third thing I would say is just thank the team, Matt and Chris and the team, because I think it's a lot of work. And I just feel great, I mean. I've never, I haven't met you, Chris, but I think that just having a technical expert. Of your caliber in the process, just I think elevates the quality of our conversations, I'm I'm very grateful for that because. If if, you know. Just makes us, you know, gives sort of sets, that sets good foundations for discussions, I'm I'm very grateful for that. Um, so I mean, I'm I'm with Robin, I think there are, there are good reasons, I think the. This is in compliance with the code, I think they have gone a significant way. In addressing our concerns, a number of the concerns, good concerns, I think council raised. Last time, I think it was interesting to see how the new mitigation efforts actually are. Notable, marginal but notable improvements, so that was a good lesson for me. For what it's worth, so I I'm, I'm, you know, in a, if we are to make a motion, I would be supporting. In 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 approving this uh application.
Thank you, Shannon.
Um, well, yeah, so I think that, you know, Trent is a street that, in this is maybe for future discussion, but Trent is a street that has those tiny curbs on it. And, you know, so it's not going to take a lot of water on that street, there's no under curve cuts. And so, you know, the more and more water we keep pushing to Trent, um, the more and more, you know, problems we could potentially have, so. Um. That's really all I'll say.
I mean, this does reduce the amount of water going to Trent compared to the current house, who understand that, right? If they're capturing five hundred and eighty cubic feet of water that's not captured by the current house.
So.
That said, that said, I appreciate your point, Shannon, I do think Trent is, there are different streets. And so I I appreciate that, I think we should bring that into a council work session. Because this is the second I, the the this, we have, you know, Trent. I think streets with these kinds of lots. With this kind of structure and also just the. I love the, what is it, the hydraulic system, that's going to be my new phrase, I appreciate that, the hydraulic systems that are in place. I think makes, make it additionally challenging on that section of town. And I think we should, we should bring that into our our thinking. Uh, for for future code work, so I appreciate you highlighting that.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, it is maybe for capturing the five hundred and thirty-four, but I mean. You know, it's not all just pure runoff right now, I mean, it, the land does capture some of that runoff, so. It's hard to say really what the impact and it's just based on one-year storm, I mean, that's not talking, like. The problem is not these one-year storms, it's these flash flood dump, you know. Two inches in a half an hour and where does it all go, and so, you know, one-year storm is a very easy amount of money or money. Um, water to to capture and not have anyone have any problems, that's not it, it's not it. What?
It's it's a challenge, but you're right.
Well, yeah, I mean, but it's easier than, it's easier than these fast storms that.
I mean.
Are causing all these problems in Alexandria because they're not structured for it.
I will, I will tell you, because I've I've heard the the states. Environment. Departments speak on this, they are revising their standards, so they are going to increase. Two point six inches up to what is the current one-year score, which is more than two point six inches in fact. And our code will reflect that in the future. At the moment, though, it is two point six inches and that's all we've got to work on.
Actually, our code will automatically.
It will automatically go reference.
We do need to look at the numbers, though, I I I hear you, Shannon, because it feels. More intense, the intensity. The lived experience of these storms. Feels like our interventions are mismatched, but I think we should look at the numbers and understand exactly what's happening.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think that it's all like good progress and, um. You know, I mean, I think that, I think it's totally making progress from where it is, but. You know, you just, you can't help but like look at the news and, you know, what happens and. It's the part of the problem is that because of our soils, they're so non-permeable that, um. You know, it's fine, so maybe we capture the flash flood that happens like, you know, one day, but then that next day. When all the water is still working on being drained out, we get another storm and then another one, and it's just that kind of impact really. Um, will impact our roads and our houses and everything, and so, you know, I just think it's really good to be very meaningful and thoughtful about it. When we're having house changes and, you know, especially on streets that are kind of tight streets like Trent is. There's not a lot of, like, it's a lot of house, like. You know, on on everyone's lot, and so if everyone does this, you know, what happens?
Okay, that's last word, and that's for uh exciting future discussion, but I think you're ready to make the motion.
Well. I think, I think we're almost there, I'd like to provide. Just a purely constant, perhaps, to Robin to. To propose a motion, if we pull things together, take a third law. One. I I want to clarify, address the potential confusion about. Requirements regarding driveways going, permeable driveways going up to. The house structure. And I don't want to reopen discussions with. Other folks in the audience, but I pulled up the. The DPS. Instruction. And I I don't think we're actually, we've been saying, instruction says the storage volume for any permeable surface. Should be located down the gradient of building structures and be set back. A minimum of ten feet from buildings. So that storage volume, which is that area. Past that sort of plastic shield underneath the. Underlying, ask me at least ten feet back.
And that's a volume that you can't find in terms of what's captured.
Right, so I think, but but anyhow, I don't think we were in time for it. So I think that's good to address, um.
Steve, could could, given the time and the nature of the conversation we've had. Could Robin make a motion and then once that's stable, we can have a discussion if you need to amend that or.
Almost, the only other thing I want, I just want to mention that. Or move on, and then one of the thoughts I think should be addressed in the motion is. The the landscape. Uh, plants, the plants.
Yeah, right.
And it's just, we we don't have it, and somehow we have to. We're going to approve this, we have to to record.
Matt has something, you know, see if that's sufficient.
Okay.
We bring it through.
Thank you.
All right, so. I. Move that we approve the building permit applications submitted by Peter Lustig on behalf of Lustig Associates for the construction of a new home on the property located at. Fifty-five, twenty-eight trench feet with the following conditions. Wall check survey should be submitted within twenty-four hours of receipt by the applicant, a height check survey shall be submitted also within twenty-four hours of receipt by the applicant. Projects shall comply with the town arborist's recommended forestation plan. Or the landscape infiltration practices should utilize native plants in accordance with the Maryland Design Manual. Uh, and and this, Steve, this is your point, the applicant could also consult with the town of Somerset Stormwater Consultant on the specific selection of plants before installation. Right.
Okay, Mr. Town, Mr. Town Manager, is that maybe?
It's not finished. Uh, number five, the applicant shall execute a maintenance agreement drafted by the town attorney binding all owners and subsequent owners of land served. By the stormwater maintenance plan per the town code. Uh, section one-one-two fourteen D forty. And lastly, that all asbestos-containing materials are handled, debated, and removed in accordance with State Federal and all other other applicable regulations and guidelines. It's best of plan. Uh, Matt also mentioned. So that's six record, six conditions on approval. Do I have a second?
This has the tenor. That was excellent, that is from the mark. Do you, is it okay, Mr. Town Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I did have one question, I was looking for clarification on the site plan, I was wondering what. Plants, if any, were proposed in the infiltration. Pit, I thought it was just going to be grass. But I could be wrong. The land, the landscape infiltration facility.
But that doesn't impact the motion, though, Ron, right?
Well, but, but if we're going to say, if we're going to impose a condition that native plants be used. That suggests that there needs to be plants, so I just wanted to make sure there wasn't an intent to put plants in that trench.
You have a big sort of empty box that. Essentially empty box, if he keeps going down, I think that. It's labeled, uh, that's the one, it's labeled.
So, so, Councilor Bar, do you want to, do you want to clarify that?
As I understand it, uh, they are intending to plant it. Uh, but have not chosen the plants yet, um, I have not shown them yet.
So does that work, Mr. Town? Well. Can you, you want to suggest some other, something else?
I would suggest we we clarify what's proposed in that trench, because I I had thought it was just. Grass, that there weren't, it wasn't going to be a rain garden per se, it's just an infiltration trench.
Well, can can, um.
We need to reopen the record.
Ten to ten manager, clarify it, or do we need to react in the record?
Am I, am I allowed to speak? My my, my recommendation was based on the Maryland Department of Environment's. Um, description of landfill, uh, landscape infiltration practices, and that's something that I've spoken to. Uh, Chris Step before about is selecting native plants and he had said that. He would, he would work with the applicant if if it came to it, to help pick out native plants and appropriate plants for.
So can you fashion language, Mr. Town Attorney?
I cannot, Mr. Mayor.
I cannot, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Please give me one second.
Okay, sure. Take your time.
You know, to you, to you, new council members. Can you imagine? Can you imagine?
No.
Can we just tell them?
Yeah, aren't we telling them that it's going to be needed?
Yes.
Right, yes.
I guess if they object, then. We come back and.
Okay, you can, Mr. President, you can talk.
Uh, we're, we're just taking a look at our permitting services. Information on landscape, landscape infiltration from October sixth, twenty twelve. That provides direction on the plantings that we need to go into device.
I don't think we have any council members welcome to help town attorney fashion.
What are we trying, what language are we trying?
Where, where, where do we need to go beyond what's, what Matt has written already, which is utilize native plants in accordance with the Maryland Design Manual?
How many plants?
Do, why does that matter in the motion?
Because I, I would recommend that it be clear so that it's not a subject of future dispute. If the applicant decides not to plant anything.
Would they be in compliance? You know, a, a, a three level scheme for planting native plants in, in the. Landscape infiltration.
Well, it, it might be easiest to ask the applicant what they prepare is.
Not sure. By all means, we can do that, but.
Let's just do that. Let's just open the record and do that.
Okay. Can we just open up that one question?
Yes.
Okay, so, um.
Jeff had his hand raised earlier. I think he's ready to answer.
Well, yeah, I, I think I can answer it hopefully.
Hold on one second, one second.
Hold on, wait a minute, our, our consultant. Can answer. I know Jeff is not, is the applicant. Okay, we have that in the record, so, so I'm opening the record and then, uh. It's going to be a random question, so we'll start with council president to ask the applicant.
Right, so for the applicant, what are your plans for planting in the infiltration device?
My plan. May I, may I, may I respond?
Oh, yeah.
Um, my, my plan is to make it as attractive as possible. Um, it's a, it's a depression in the front yard, which. Not everyone would want to see, I imagine. Um, so as, as many native plants as I, as I can. Uh, to make it attractive and, um. And effective, uh, with respect to, um, you know, uh, plants using the water to, uh. To survive. Um. I, I do not, I do not intend to have a grass depression. It would, it's going to be in a, it's going to be a landscaping feature. And it's, it's going to.
That satisfies my question. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But does anybody else have a question?
I mean, Council of Bar, you have a question?
No, I have both motionless.
Council member Helen?
No.
Council member Kumar?
None.
That's where we're at.
Nope.
Yeah, do we have to have it public?
There are no public comments.
Okay, so now, now we're closing the record and. I will turn it over to Council of Bar to work with the language of the town attorney.
All right, uh, December four, uh, landscape, it said currently the landscape information boxes. Will utilize native plants in accordance with Maryland Design Manual. Want to add to that.
I don't think it requires addition.
Council member. Okay, thank you. So there are six conditions, wall check, height check. Town arborists, reforestation plan, landscape infiltration practices. Uh, the, the fifth condition is that it would binding on owners and subsequent owners of land serve. That, that's a stormwater maintenance plan. And the last condition is on asbestos. So those are the six conditions.
Okay, Mr. Town Attorney, is that? Are you satisfied?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, Council member. Kumar, are you seconding that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your excellent legislating. Is there discussion on the motion? Very none, all those are taken.
Aye.
Aye, opposite opposed. Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. Congratulations to the applicant. And we will now move to the building administrators' report.
Thank you.
Good evening. At forty-five fifteen Cumberland, uh. That record plat re-subdivision is still in the hands of Maryland National Capital Parking Plan Commission, so we're still waiting for that to be clarified. At forty-five fifteen Dorset Avenue. They applied for a permit to construct a two-car detached garage behind the house. The council approved the application on August seventh. Uh, the town permit should be issued this month. At forty-eight oh-six Grantham. Property owner submitted an application to add a second story to the existing house. The council approved the permit in May. The town permit was issued July eighth and work has begun, has not, I'm sorry, work has not begun on that project yet. At fifty-five oh-two Greystone, they're adding addition to the existing house. Uh, from the information that we've received, the contractor, the, the county permit was issued in the contractor's name. He has since withdrawn that permit. And the property owner is in the process of re-filing the form to the county to have the permit in his name. At fifty-five twenty-two Greystone, according to the property owner, the only work remaining on that property is for the. Pepco connections coming off of Greystone Street. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Sir, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much, Doug.
Council of Bar, no questions. Uh, Councilor.
No questions. Thank you, Doug.
Councilor.
Um, I'm sorry, can you, can you tell me, uh, what the, what is the forty-eight fifteen Cumberland status again?
The. They, they filed for a re-subdivision plat because of the, uh, alignment, uh, the shape of the lot. So the town does not have re-subdivision authority. They rely on the Maryland National Capital Parking Planning Commission. As they filed the plat with the commission, it's being reviewed by their staff. Until that is approved, the county cannot issue their permit and we're on hold also. So it's relating to the shape of the property. And I guess, I think they're combining several parcels into one piece so they can get a building permit.
Okay.
Is that your only question?
Yeah, thanks.
Councilor Heller, do you have a question?
No.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And before we adjourn, does anyone have questions of the manager's report, Council President Sir?
Well, thank you.
Um, no, that's okay. I, I, Council of Bar, did you have any questions of the extensive and beautifully written manager's report?
Feel pressure on me. Uh, no, I have no question.
You can, this council member Heller.
No question.
Councilor Kumar.
No questions.
Are you in our time zone, by the way?
I, I am, I am in.
Okay, thank God. Councilor Rebecca.
Um. Uh.
It's a man.
No, I know. I'm thinking if this is like a work session question or a town council question. Yeah, um.
That's good.
Oh, no. So someone was just mentioning to me, um. Do we have like, do we have like an Excel document of all the permits that come in and out?
That's a council question.
Um, not a math question. It's a council question.
No, it's a, it's a question to be appropriate.
Oh, okay.
Of existing, of, of existing and previously, uh, permitted.
I guess like ongoing, like.
Um, that's, that, yes, ye- yes.
Like tree permits and stuff and.
Uh, yeah, yeah. And, and that's what Doug's report is trying to.
So, so you're trying to, so people can look at the history?
Uh, yeah, yeah, just basically so we can, well, no, it's like also like a, like a, you know, to manage like the, the process workload process of it all. Because how many permits, someone was asking me how many permits come through and.
Well, I think, I think that's something that in the future we could have on our website.
I mean.
Public information, right?
We, we. Yes. We do put it in the town journal, but I could also include that in my report if that's helpful, just monthly to say these are the permits that we, you know. The administrative permits that we gave the past month, if they're, you know, trees or.
Yeah, you know, it might be interesting to look at the kind of like the time and labor workload from like these tree permits. Um, you know, because, um, in particular, I mean, I think the, these building permits are obviously different and bigger, but the tree permits, um. You know, once Dr. Feather kind of says like, oh yeah, it's dead, it should come down, you know, how many of those, those tree permits do we do in a month, you know?
Right, right.
I don't, I don't know the answer.
But also related to that, I think originally when we were talking about. A much improved website would be a place where these kind of documents can be, so that anybody can read. So then we can research the history of all the permits and also it will be good for future applicants, building applications. So they have an idea of what has been approved and all that.
Yeah.
So thank you for raising it. And I think that's something we can ask the, uh, maybe the communications committee can. Can make some.
Yeah, because also, you know, someone was like wanting to know kind of where their permit was in, in the process too.
Because I think, I think at the county level, you can do that.
Yeah, you can do that.
Yeah, so I think that would be.
You can put this on the, on the town website if you want.
I, I, I've also been looking at software that we can use too, that, that. Makes it easier for us, but also better communicate that information to applicants so they can look up and see it's in process, things like that.
Right, right, right. Because like, then if, if, if there's no place to look it up, then everyone's like emailing you all the time. Seeing like what's happening with this, what's happening? And it would be nice to have it kind of all done like.
That's something you have to think that our deputy is going to be ensure. He's, you know, he's sure.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Maybe that EJ can look into that too, so.
Okay, actually I do have one small thing before, before we go because the, the, just because this is kind of an exciting one is that, uh, in, in Jeffrey's checks is our check. That our first check to Pepco for the street light replacement. So we're making progress on.
Okay, good. So and we will.
They finally invoiced us.
We will see everybody next Monday night at five thirty for our work session. And thank you very much. It's our motion to adjourn.
Absolutely.
And I do want to congratulate all of you on the level of. Legislation. Well, then you were legislating tonight, you were decision made, administrative decision making. And we also owe a huge thank you to our town.
Yep, thank you, your Tom Turner.
Because I can imagine, can you imagine all of you that we used to do this twenty years ago with no. No town manager, no building administrator, no town attorney. And it would be like the, had Phil said to McCoy.
Totally.
Fighting and you had, you would have had like Varda and, and, and Ray here. You know, like all over the applicants and, and I, I'm like, I, you.
Appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, but the best idea tonight came from the town manager, so I need to pass on that.
Oh, yeah, well, you know, we were brilliant. We were pretty.
Not, not the first time, not the first time.
Robert, did you?
All right, good night.
Did you ever go to a town meeting?
Good night, all.
Good night.
Did you, Robert, did you go? When, when Walter was mayor?